Our first in-person meeting since August or September. Opportunity for all of us to get together and see each other, other than on the Zoom calls. So that should make it quite pleasant. This meeting is the general meeting of the Board of Trustees. It will be followed by an executive session. And that'll be our pattern in the future where it is applicable. We did receive some comments from some patrons that it's difficult to plan their visit if we have an executive session first. And so to accommodate them, we're practical. We're going to do a regular board meeting and then an executive session. Hopefully, we won't have too many executive sessions. But if I might ask, Gloria, would you call the roll?
Certainly. Ben?
Present.
Kent?
Present.
Paul?
Present.
Sharon?
Present.
Jim?
Present.
And myself, Gloria, present. Thank you.
Marty texted.
We're missing Marty.
He'll be late.
Okay.
Okay. We'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Sharon, and may I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. So far, we're on a roll. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes. May I have a motion to approve the regular session minutes for March 25th and the claims for April 9th?
So moved.
Thank you, Gloria. Second, Jim, thank you. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I just had one point of clarification on the minutes. And it was in regards to the masks and what our policy was. It stated in the minutes that it was going to continue until the end of the emergency health. I'm not exactly sure what it was, the end of the emergency health. But in that meeting, Sharon had made an amendment to that for it to end April 30th. And so I want to make sure that the minutes reflect that properly on that piece as a correction.
I checked the tape, too. I wasn't hearing. You're accurate on that. So with that, as a friendly amendment, all those in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. All right. David, you're up.
Great. Thank you, Ben. As always, in your packet are the financial statements. There's a couple of lines that are overspending at this point. I kind of talked about one last time, the landscape and upkeep area. That is, the snow we've had this year led to much higher snow removal costs. So that line is spending ahead of schedule. Hopefully, things will calm down a little bit, although based on, what was it, Tuesday snow, I don't know. We're going to have another billing coming in on that. But we'll deal with that at year-end transfers. We'll bring some money into that line from any of the other lower-spending lines. The other line is temporary help service, I noted in there. You know, we continue, as I'm sure most companies have trouble filling some of the entry-level positions, especially in the EVS, the housekeeping and the security area. And so we're having to utilize some temporary help services to fill in because there's just minimum staffing levels that we have to meet, especially in security. So that line's spending a little ahead. And again, we will deal with that at year-end. Some of the news and notes I noted down there, one of the good news is we finally got word from GFOA that our comprehensive annual financial report, again, won the award for excellence in reporting. This is the 28th year that we have received that. It was a little late coming this year because of COVID had backed up everything in the GFOA area. But we're happy and proud to get that. And ironically, we're right in the midst of doing the audit to try and get the statement set to submit for the next year, the 29th year. So that's the other thing going on, as I noted in the news. You know, audit is taking place right now. Crow LLC is the group that has been outsourced, or the state board of account outsourced the audit to them. So far, so good. I mean, they're still getting accustomed to our statements, our general ledger system and everything. But so far, they seem to be understanding things. So I'm getting the impression, I know they have a target date of completion by June 1, which is perfect because that gives us plenty of time to get it into the submission format for GFOA by the deadline of the 30th of June. So that's going well. I'm sure you've seen, the only other couple of things I'll talk about is, one, you've seen the economic forecasts that have come out, the state revenue forecasts are coming up positive. We kind of talked a little bit about that last meeting, and we're still getting good signs of that. We're going to start getting 2022 budget information. The main one coming out soon will be next Friday, we will get a confirmation from the state on what the actual 2021 tax caps were. And so we had had estimates that we used in our budget from them of 2.7 million for the tax cap effect on the property tax. Next Friday, we'll find out what those actually are, since now all of the tax or the budget orders have been issued. So that's one. And then, starting in May, there'll be a number of seminars and information sessions that'll be coming out with revenue estimates and, you know, things like that for the 2022 budget. So I'll keep you apprised of that. Let's see. Interesting, one thing I wanted to give you, because we'd had a Capital Projects Committee meeting earlier this week, and Marty, you know, when he gets here, I'm sure we'll talk about that in his committee report. But what I handed out to you was something that Kent had been talking about, and I wanted to put this together. It's a report that gives you an idea of the capital project items that we have completed or are in process that came into play after last year's bond issue request had been turned down, and they said, "Well, go and fund that with reserves." So these are the parts so far that we have funded through our capital project reserve area. And there's many more to go. Of course, we're walking a fine line because at this point, you know, the facility master plan is being developed. And we don't want to do something that come, you know, August, when we would get that report, may end up being dismantled, and we'd have to do it over again. But you've got to keep the heat on, you've got to keep the cooling on. So you can see a lot of them are HVAC-related and roofing and things like that. But I just wanted to pass that on to you for information. I'll keep these coming with items that, as they complete the rest of the year and we add new ones, you'll have an idea of what's been being done with the reserves, you know, so far. So really, that's all I have to talk about at this point, but I'd be glad to answer any questions you would have.
Any question? Sharon? Oh, did you tell me? Paul?
And I may be missing it, but when you have the year-to-date revenue and expenses, is it possible to add in here a column that shows higher year, year-to-date, so we can compare the two?
Well, on the combined revenue and expense report, it would be about the third page in. If you look, combined revenue and expenses, you'll have year-to-date through March of this year, and then through March of last year is the last column on that. Are you seeing that one? It's the one on the heading of ACPL, Combined Revenues, Expenses, Change in Fund Balance.
What page?
In the Treasury's report, it was the third page, one after the graphs. Yeah. And then, like you see, the second to the last is March 2021, and then March of '20. So it kind of gives you an idea of where we were comparing last year.
Yeah. Like I said.
All right, great.
I had mentioned it previously, and I guess I'll just request it again. I think it would be helpful for us if we could have some sort of information, and this was not my term, I think somebody else after I brought it up a while back, used, it may have been you, used the term kind of an efficiency factor, so to speak, or calculation. I'm used to that, seeing that in business I'm in. And I think it would be interesting to look at expenses and come up with some sort of equation in terms of hours that were open, services provided, et cetera, et cetera. So we can just, you know, understand at a very high level, you know, month to month, kind of how we're doing.
Sure.
I may be the only one that has an interest in that.
No, I mean, I think it's worthwhile. I know Denise works on part of this as far as her statistical side. What we'd have to develop is, what's a meaningful comparison? How do we?
I agree.
Yeah. So, you know, we haven't forgotten about that. In fact, you know, I think she's in the process of redoing a lot of the numbers, getting the new things, the new hours, the new opening. I mean, 2020 was such a wacky year to try and judge that.
Well, and that's part of the reason I'd like to see it. And I understand that it's not perfect by any stretch, and you would have to come up with, you know, kind of your own components to that calculation, obviously. But again, I just think it would be helpful.
Sure. No, we'll continue to keep it on the to-do.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion, then, that we accept the financial report of March 2021.
So moved.
Jim?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Okay. Let's move now to item five, the approval of the claims. David, any extraordinary claim?
The largest one is 251,000 to CME Corporation. It's all on the Rowland Center renovation there. The other ones are, the usual ones are utilities of around 100,000, and then, you know, book purchases and library materials. So nothing really out of the ordinary. You know, I've got the, since we were meeting in person, I didn't have Jill email out the reports like she usually would, so.
Any questions that the trustees would like to ask regarding claims? Okay. If not, then I'll entertain a motion, we accept the claims as presented.
So moved.
Kent?
Second.
Paul? Any discussion? Not all in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. I was remiss in the beginning to say that at the table in back where the water bottles are, there's also a sign-up sheet. This is, since we're meeting in person, an opportunity for the public to publicly comment. So if anyone here is from the public and they would like to speak, please sign up in the back. And at the end of the meeting, you can go to the front, and we'll call you in the order in which you're signed up, and let us hear what you have to say. Okay. We have a staff presentation. Is Paige Shook here? There she is. And by the way, the LED lights at Woodburn are working? The renovation is working?
Yeah, it's working on it, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, super excited to get new lights. Hi, I am Paige. I'm the manager at Woodburn. I've been the manager there for almost three years, it'll be three years in September. And I have created a video for you all. Welcome to the Woodburn Branch Library located in the heart of Woodburn. You might think that a parking lot is an odd place to start a tour, but this particular parking lot plays an important role in our community. If this lot could talk, it would tell you about the time little princesses and pirates arrived at the library, the fire truck and ambulance tours that happened here, walking and paint, painting with fly swatters, sizzling science experiments, the exciting bug expeditions, painting Ms. Paige's car, hot dog picnics, or in recent times, the silly-dressed librarians delivering curbside pickups. It would tell you stories of families having a place to park their cars so they can walk to the nearby park slash baseball diamonds. Some of my personal favorite stories are the ones about the Wi-Fi access that is provided here. Not a single day goes by that there isn't a car parked in the lot using the library's Wi-Fi signal. It could be a child doing homework, a college student rushing to send their paper before the deadline, been there, done that, people doing Zoom meetings in their cars, also me, or a parent taking some personal time to watch Netflix while their significant other puts the kids to bed. The parking lot has seen it all. While our parking lot is a significant place outside of our building, one of the busiest places inside the branch is our children's area. So let's head inside so I can show you the space that is one of the patrons' favorite areas to visit, and also is home to the highest circulating collection at Woodburn. Families spend important time here picking out books to share, reading on the bench, working at the tables, and before COVID, playing with the toys. All of our materials in this area are beloved by our patrons, but I'm going to highlight the newest material and one that is growing in popularity, the Read Along Collection. If you're not familiar with the Read Alongs, they are a new collection of books added to the system. These books have a small attached device that will read the book out loud to you. They have been a great hit at Woodburn, and you can see that we have been having some difficulty keeping them on our shelves. Up next is our teen area. It's nowhere near as busy as the children's area, but it does see a few teens here and there coming to grab a new book to lead them on their next great adventure. Another collection that has been growing in interest is our board games. While it's taken some time to gain interest, it's finally getting some use from our families in our community. Over this way is our adult area. While we have a lot to offer to our patrons, there are a few types of materials we just seem to never have enough of. The first is our Christian fiction collection. This is by far the most popular genre in our building, and our patrons appreciate that we have them pulled out and shelved separately, making them easier and quicker to access. Another is magazines. They are very popular and circulate well at Woodburn. I have countless stories of patrons telling me how much they appreciate our collection of magazines, not only the ones at Woodburn, but as a system. In the middle of the library is our collection of DVDs, Blu-rays, video games, and CDs. Most of the collection circulates well, but isn't nearly as popular as the children's books. The last stop on this tour is the circulation desk. Like the parking lot, it has many stories it can share, but today, it's going to tell you about the staff at Woodburn. Woodburn has a total of four incredibly awesome, hard-working, amazing staff members who work here and keep this building running. There is me, Paige, the manager, Michaela, 20-hour branch assistant, Patty, 20-hour branch assistant, and our newest member, Jared, who is a 12-hour branch assistant. We have one of the smallest staff in the system, but we are one of the mightiest. My staff is dedicated to providing programs and services to our community the best that we can, despite the fact we are little. One last thing before we conclude this tour. You may or may not have noticed the display on the top shelves behind our circulation desk. The community knows it as Ms. Paige's Piggy Bank Collection. I have 69 piggy banks, and once in a while, I'll bring them into display. Do you see any familiar characters? I hope you all have a wonderful day and hope to see you in person soon. P.S., we are only 30 minutes from the main branch, and we have some amazing views of tractors, windmills, horses, cows, and much more. You never know what you might see on a trip to Woodburn or what story you can add.
Thank you very much, Karen.
Thank you. And I can answer any questions that you may have. No? All right. Well, thank you for letting me talk. Bye.
Thank you.
Well done. Thank you. Stephanie, Jump Spark?
Nice to see you all back here in the same room. So it's been over 13 months since a national health emergency was declared and kids were sent home from school. And whether your child has been back in school in person this year or attending virtually or a mix of both, the reality is, it's been a really weird year for all of us, for the students, for the caregivers, for the teachers and school administrators. And we're so close to the end of the school year, I'm sure Gloria can really appreciate this. But throughout this whole situation, the library has really put our arms around those students and their family members and teachers as much as we could. So we, with your support, gave access to our digital materials to all library cardholders, even if they had accrued fines that would normally block them, to make sure they had access while the library is closed and while school is closed. We have started offering tutor.com, which is a free online tutoring service for all kids from kindergarten to high school seniors, also assisting with college prep, all those really important tools that they needed, whether they were learning at home or in school. But we knew that there was more we had to do because we are approaching our summer learning program, Summer Spark. And so just a reminder, Spark stands for science and play and art and reading and knowledge, all those different ways in which kids and adults learn and find new things to be excited about. But typically, this time of year, our libraries will be out in the classrooms across the county, talking about Spark, talking about summer learning programs, talking about all the cool programs and prizes for kids. And it's a little bit different this year. So for those schools who are comfortable having our librarians come in, we're definitely doing the visits and we're getting out there. But it's not a normal year, and we can't get everywhere that we want to be. But we also know this summer is going to be so important for those kids and their caregivers. Why? Because summer reading program is really designed to help counteract that summer slide, as we call it. So that's what happens when kids are out of the classroom for those few months, they're having fun, they're doing stuff, but they're not actively learning, and they lose knowledge. So they're not fully prepared when they go back in the fall. Well, we're now experiencing what we call the COVID slump. So it's more than two or three months. We're a year into this. And so how do we really step up as a library system to help those kids? You know, last year, as we headed into summer learning program, I remember Cheryl Taylor, the former head of the Follinger Foundation, saying to me and Mara Honeywell, "If not the library, then who? Who is going to take this on?" And that charge has really stayed with us because she was right. If not the library, who's going to stand in the gap for our kids? So we have a new program that we just launched this past Sunday called Jump Spark. So this is our jump start in a summer learning program, and we had a lot of requests for additional resources leading into this. And this is just an amazing piece. You all have copies of the Jump Spark board game. We're offering them both Spanish and English. So a special thank you to our friends at the Language Service Network who translated this in Spanish for us. And so you can pick these up at any library branch, you can find it online through our website. But this is a mini version of our summer learning program. So it has lots of fun activities in all those different areas, all the different Spark areas that kids can complete and work through, and at the end, earn a prize. Because that's what's really driving the kids, right? They want the prize. But for us adults, we know it's something more important than that. It's about the learning that's taking place while they're having fun. I've said it before, I'll say it again, we are not above tricking kids into learning here at the library, right? That's perfectly okay for us to do. But what's also really important about this is that we have partnered with school systems to offer this to their students. So Fort Wayne Community Schools is putting this piece in the hands of each of their 14,000 elementary school students. So what you see here is what they will be receiving in the classrooms. This is, it looks like it's Whitney Young's because it's labeled for Young. It's the box, it has the Spanish versions in it, the English versions. Also included in the box is what you have, the two handout pieces. So one talks specifically about Jump Spark and includes a QR code that will link them to a 90-second video featuring our own Mara Honeywell talking about Jump Spark and what it is. And then the second piece is geared toward the teachers to talk about our Summer Spark program. Because we assume that every teacher in this community knows about our great summer learning program. And we know that's not true. There's still a learning gap there. So really messaging to them the importance of both Jump Spark and our Summer Spark program. So that's Fort Wayne Community Schools. We are also in talks with other school systems here in the area to offer this to all their students. That's not finalized, so I don't want to step on any news they might be sharing soon. But again, it's been so meaningful to our staff to find another way to really put our arms around the kids in the community, those caregivers who have been struggling, who have real concerns about whether their kids are at the appropriate level, and then those teachers who have just been heroes over the past year, helping kids learn in really difficult circumstances. Other supporting pieces that go along with this are additional resources that we're pushing out to help parents. So if you're talking about your kids, and are they reading at the right level, what does that look like? So school systems use one of two different tools for that. So some schools use Accelerate Reader, so AR, or Lexile. So in our card catalog, if you're looking for a title, you can see there in the record what that level is. You can make sure your kid is reading at the appropriate level for him or her. We've also created a video to go along with that. Becca in our teens department did a great job, put together a really helpful video to help parents find that information on our website, but then also helped them compile lists within a specific Lexile or AR range. So how do they find the right titles for their kid? So again, this is just us trying to be innovative as a library system and meet the needs that we see. So what questions do you have for me today about Jump Spark?
This was self-generated? This isn't something we purchased from someone, we created it here?
This is built in-house. The only thing that is not ours is that people can use the paper forms to track it, or they can log into the Beanstack app, which we also use for winter Spark and summer Spark, that is a major tool. But this program, this is all ours. Our staff did a great job.
This is phenomenal. It's really a great package, great put together. Just wanted to make sure I understood, you said that every student in the Fort Wayne Community Schools, elementary schools?
Yes.
Will receive a packet?
Yes.
Is there, do you guys have a tracking measure to see if they're utilizing it or not?
So here's the fun part of it. First, I have to recognize the real champions within Fort Wayne Community Schools and some of the other school systems we're communicating with, and those are the media specialists. Back in our day, they were known as school librarians. The current term is media specialist. But they're librarians, and they know the best way for kids to learn is to read. And so they have been the champions inside our school systems for this, working with the teachers. And the teachers are also making it fun. So they have set their entire classrooms as teams so they can participate as a classroom, as a team, and they are setting up competitions between classrooms, between schools. And so they have found another way to incentivize it, whether that's pizza parties or ice cream or whatever that is for those kids. The schools and teachers are also really embracing this. So we can track it immediately through the Beanstack app. So we know we have, in less than five days, 1,000 registered users who have already logged 44,000 minutes read. And that's not counting those in the classroom using the paper forms. But we already have kids coming into our branches to redeem their prizes in less than a week. This has been a huge hit, and we're so excited about the potential, not just for this, but what it means for our summer learning program. Because again, this is the jumping off point to get kids and caregivers and teachers engaged to help them really use those summer months productively to keep kids learning.
So is this something, because I took a picture of this to share on my Facebook page, is there something that should be shared that way, or would you prefer different means?
You know, actually, if you go to the library's Facebook page, we have posts on there, so you can share out that post. It's also available on our website.
This is phenomenal. Good work.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That will mean a lot to our staff because a lot of folks in this organization have really put their hearts and souls into this. Because they're also affected, they see that the kids aren't coming in for programs. You know, a lot of them are parents or grandparents or caregivers themselves, they see the impact of this. And they also have those school relationships, and they know how important this is, and they just want it a meaningful product. And so the fact that you see that, that means a lot for them.
And is this the result of a Follinger grant, or was it self-funded?
So Follinger is the very generous funder of our summer learning program. Their dollars have been used toward those prizes, so whether it's the new book, or we have Spark books also that they can choose, Follinger did fund that. So that's why I can't show you the really great 90-second video today because we're waiting for their final approval because their logo's on it. But they're aware of this, they're so excited and so supportive, and they've also made it known to us that whatever we need in terms of keeping the schools on board, they are right there with us.
Terrific.
Yeah.
So Follinger funded the prizes, my understanding? I'm having a little trouble hearing you.
Yes. Follinger funded the new books that we use as prizes that we also use during summer learning.
But this is not from a grant or anything like this? This is just a new program?
This is. This is. This is in-house. This is our librarians, our programmers developing the concept, our in-house marketing team designing it, printing, they've printed ninety thousand copies of these alone. And so, you know, and our Access Fort Wayne team who helped produce the video that goes along with it. This has been an entire organization-wide effort of love.
Well, it looks great.
Thank you.
So how does that work? I'm just curious. I'm not an educator. How does that work as far as, I'm not good with microphones apparently here. But in terms of them approve, the school systems approve or Fort Wayne Community Schools approving this, I assume they have to approve it before you're passing out to their students.
Yeah.
And is that difficult? I mean, obviously you control your curriculum pretty carefully.
Yeah, I mean Glory has more insight into this than I do. What I know the process, the fifty thousand-foot explanation of it is that, again, we have really dedicated media specialists in Fort Wayne Community Schools, one of whom has to sit on the board of the friends of the library. So she is fully invested on several different fronts, but really those media specialists taking up the charge and working through their proper channels. And also Superintendent Daniel with Fort Wayne Community Schools also realizing and stating, reading is the best way for kids to learn and stay on track.
Great program.
Any, Marty, any questions? Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Very well done. Do let us know the final numbers.
I will.
Thank you. Marty, you're up.
All right. Don't mind, I'll take this off so I can speak unmuffled. Everyone, I'm Chair of the Capital Projects Committee and just really just to give a report today. If you recall, at the last board meeting, we voted to authorize Susan to start our facilities master plan services program here by hiring Boswick Design. I believe the contract has either been signed or it's very close to being signed, Susan.
It has been signed today.
It has been signed and community engagement and staff engagement should be moving forward here shortly. Kim, if anybody has any questions, can talk to you about kind of the timeline of that at this point. The Capital Projects Committee, which has been, Kent and myself did meet with Susan and Kim and I believe Dave were there, was there as well just to give the update, a little more in-depth update of how we're going to start proceeding right now. And we're excited. I think this is very important for the community, for this library. So right now it's moving forward and I think that's all, really the only update I have for you today is that we're moving forward with it, got the contract signed. So we should start, should start moving the process and the engagement up, I would guess in the next few weeks, in the next month. Any questions though that any of the board members have at this point? We're more than happy to answer them. I'll try and then I'll probably pass it off to Susan and Kim if there are any questions.
I just wanted to make a comment. Earlier in the meeting, you weren't here quite yet, but Dave passed out the Capital Project spending report that shows what we've paid for capital-wise out of reserves. And I think it's important to note, this totals almost one point five million dollars that are coming out of reserves and, you know, that's kudos to staff again and Dave's team for watching the pennies on that end of it. But, you know, thank you for all you do to run an efficient operation that allows for reserves to be set aside that then can be used for projects like this as well. And so for, you know, anybody listening, you know, from that standpoint, that's, these are projects that are funded through, through the general tax levy on that sense. And so they're not a part of a bond or something that adds extra cost. And so I just think it's really important and as we proceed and look at all of our capital work, we know there's probably going to be some opportunities to discuss larger sums of money that need to be invested in our capital projects. But for right now, it's just really awesome to think that, you know, a lot has been done internally to make sure that, you know, we're keeping the buildings up and that we're paying attention to those things. So one point five million dollars is a really good, really good number to look at. So thank you.
Thank you, everyone. And thank you, Kent, for bringing that out. I'm sorry I was late for that.
You're fine.
To get the understanding of that. Ben, anything you wanted to add for the committee at all?
Well, well done. It's an exciting time.
All right. Well, that's the only report that I have for the Capital Projects Committee.
Okay. Let's move then into the Director's Report. Susan, you're up.
Good afternoon, everyone. And it is so wonderful to see you in person and not in a Brady Bunch-esque square on a screen. I did submit a written Director's Report, a few highlights from it that I wanted to share. I did want to mention that all of our library staff have joined thousands of other Allen County community members in participating in United Front Training. United Front is a program that develops a community conversation and vernacular around race and inclusion. And in addition to the United Front curriculum, ACPL has developed a monthly virtual town hall forum to accompany United Front. So we as a staff are getting together each month virtually to talk about what we learned and share our experiences and perspectives. And that has gone very well and I'm really excited that as an organization, we are embarking on this journey together. And I wanted to share, and I know Dave mentioned it, but I think it's important, so I want to share it again. I want to extend my congratulations and appreciation to Dave and his team for winning for the twenty-eighth year in a row, the Award of Excellence for the Certified Annual Financial Report. I don't believe that is given out like a participation trophy. I think you have to earn it and I think you have to watch those pennies. And I just want to take a moment to acknowledge the excellence in public stewardship of funds that Dave and his team show. It's greatly appreciated. So thank you for that. I also wanted to share that thanks to an initiative organized by Kim Bolan, our Director of Public Services, our branch managers are now attending the city area quadrant meetings representing their library's neighborhood to give updates to community members about what is going on at the library and also learn about what's going on in other aspects of the neighborhood. And I have been attending them as well. I've attended three out of the four. And as a new resident to Fort Wayne, I've learned quite a lot from them. And in addition to the city quadrant meetings, we'll also be attending the New Allen Alliance. Do I have that correct, Kent?
You do.
Yes, and I think we may see you there as well.
Yes, that's right. And I was going to mention that the New Haven branch manager was there. And I know in the past, the branch manager, Grable, also attended and participated in things. So it was really, really nice to see her this month and engaging, so.
Yes, and that will be continued and I have it on my calendar to come to the May one myself.
Excellent. Excellent.
Are there any questions about my Director's Report?
Not a question, but a comment. Just thank you for doing what I believe is a really good job of jumping into the community. The idea, I think you mentioned, Kim came up with the idea of the area quadrant participation. That is a really, really good idea. And so just thanks for doing that and participating. I know you're getting out there quite a bit and it's appreciated.
You're welcome. It's been very valuable to me, both personally and professionally, to go to those meetings.
Thank you, Susan. Any other questions or comments? Well, let's move to the exciting part of our agenda, the holiday closure schedule.
Well, I hope I don't disappoint you. It's not super exciting. It's not a super dramatic change, but we are asking for approval for one minor change. So annually, we do have a staff development day. Obviously, last year that did not happen due to COVID. But Staff Development Day is a closed day to the public, but a workday for us where there is a full day of learning and team building with our team. It had been scheduled for August twentieth, but we felt due to COVID, it might be better to push that out a little further in the year. So what we are requesting is to, instead of August twentieth, to have our Staff Development Day be on Monday, October fourth. So that would be a closed day for the public, for the library. All locations would be closed, but it would be a workday for our staff.
Well, to formalize that, can we have that in the form of a motion? Would a board member like to make that as a motion?
Move for approval of the library closing schedule for 2021.
And the second? Thank you. Any discussion?
Just an editorial comment that, you know, for all board members, please, you know, mark that date down because I did attend it in 2019 and it was really nice to be engaged in hearing the speaker, hearing what's going on along those lines and just having some good conversations with people in the room. So I encourage you all to attend as well.
Any other comments? Not all in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? And that passes. Now we have in our packet item number eleven, a discussion on our mask requirement. Susan, want to walk us through that?
Absolutely. So our current mask requirement at all locations is that masks are required for patrons eight and up until August, excuse me, until April thirtieth. And our senior staff recommendation tonight is to extend that mask requirement for patrons in library buildings through July fourth, 2021. Again, no mask would be required for children under eight and medical exemptions would be available upon request. And the justification for the request is to align with other government buildings in Allen County. Currently, City of Fort Wayne buildings are requiring masks through July fourth. Allen County government buildings and the Allen County courts are requiring masks until further notice. I'm not aware that they have announced an actual date to end it. Other reasons for our request would be in response to a patron survey regarding the COVID safety measures they value to allow additional time for interested staff to be fully vaccinated and also due to rising local case numbers.
Worthy of a discussion? Comments?
I would not describe the survey results as overwhelming, number one. I'm, I know it's not very fashionable, but I'm a fan of assuming people can take personal responsibility and do the right thing socially distanced, wear a mask if they feel that it's necessary for whatever reason.
You're special. One different with two mics, right?
Paul, you want to speak from here?
No. But I think, I think the majority of people are very frustrated by the mask mandates. So I would prefer that we put signs up that simply request, recommend masking, but not mandate it. I suspect I won't.
Any other comments?
I think when we, when we addressed this topic last month, the two major factors that, that we were considering was that the governor had already released the state mandate and left it up to the individual counties. And at that point in time, Allen County had not made any comments as to their particular, they hadn't weighed in at that time. So that mandate was still on. A week later, the county medical advisors came out and lifted the requirements for mask mandates. I just, that was one of the reasons that I decided to vote to hold it off until the thirtieth. In all deference to the senior staff's recommendations, I don't, I can't look at the City of Fort Wayne buildings, the courthouse. We do things differently than they and I'm not that, I'm not that concerned with equating the library along with those particular buildings. The survey, surveys are surveys. Make up of what you want. As far as the other reason that I voted last month to continue till April thirtieth is because there was the plea or the statement that a lot of the staff had not gotten vaccinated. And at the present time, I looked and I saw the thirty-seven percent, and I even asked Kendra before the meeting, there is really no way of knowing how many of those one hundred and thirty-nine employees that are under forty have in fact been vaccinated because the library doesn't ask that. Is that correct, Kendra? So that particular statement is just inconsequential. And I did some more research and as of April twenty-first, I went and saw the latest from the CDC. And their logic as far as mask wearing was, if you want to wear a mask, you're doing it to protect other individuals, not necessarily yourself. And I'm agreeing with, excuse me, Mr. Moss, when he says it's really up to the, the decision of the individuals. Since there are no mandates, I don't think that we should be requiring it. We should leave it up to the individuals to make their own decisions.
Thank you, Jim. Marty?
I guess I do support the staff recommendation. The only issue I would have is do we really extend it to July fourth or we decide again next month or decide in June instead? As I've thought about this, I certainly understand the issues and, but I think Jim just said, you know, the main reason we do it is protect others. So that's why I want it to be mandated. I think it is to protect others, not the person, whether they're wearing a mask or not. The whole point of this isn't to protect yourself by wearing the mask as much as it is to just try to stem the spread as it's going. I think there's no doubt it has worked and I think we are very close to hopefully not being able to have to wear these anymore. And this is summer and I'd like to continue it that way. I do think the trends are not particularly positive. They're not terrible as they have been, but they're not particularly positive. And I support the staff's recommendation at this point that we continue to ask that our patrons wear masks in the building. I think we have enough services to provide for those who simply can't and we should continue it.
Thank you.
I would also agree with Martin. Medical profession.
Could you speak up a little, Gloria?
Yes.
And your microphone?
I do agree with Martin's.
You want to take your mask off, face it.
No.
Just in, just in that time.
I, due to the reason is that the medical profession, when posed the question, do masks work, there was an emphatic yes. So I support the recommendation. I know school systems have it in place until June thirtieth. That might have been a better cutoff time, but I can't, I'm not going to change that. So to July fourth is not a bother to me.
So I'll probably wear a mask even if things are removed, personal choice, right? Do you want to check my mic? Am I loud enough? I'm not.
You don't need to. You don't need to.
But with that being said, I think the problem that I have is the argument that's formed because I feel like we're alacarding the, the, what we like about the city's policies as opposed to what we don't like about the city's policies or the county's policies. And, and that's the part I had a problem with before and I still have a problem with now. If we're going to use their policies as a benchmark or a measuring, then we should do that across the board. But we keep alacart picking the things that we like out of them and using that as the reasons why we should support using or changing. I personally would be in favor of saying masks are strongly recommended because there is no mandate going on right now. Saying that, I am going to be one that's going to wear my mask. But I do want our patrons to not, not feel like they're going to be accosted if they don't have their mask on when they come in. And I say that off of information that I just witnessed today and what I had seen from other people who've come. One of the councilmen told me when they came into the library, they were stopped and grabbed and said, hey, where's your mask? So I, I would say masks are strongly recommended, but it's hard to say that we have to mandate them now since there is no mandate any longer. I just don't like the cherry picking either. So I don't know that that answers your questions either way. As far as where I'm at, we'll know in a vote, but that's what I'm thinking on right now.
Well, since I'm the last one to weigh in, I think it was Winston Churchill that said, if you're not a liberal, when you're young, you have no heart. If you're not a conservative, when you're old, you have no brain. Now, he used liberal and conservative a little differently. I would say I'm more cautious. And while I believe individuals have the obligation to protect themselves and the community, we don't have a voluntary income tax that we pay, nor a voluntary speed limit and things of that nature. And I think the science still argues masks are effective. Whether the county is going to have it this day and the city's going to have it that day, that's almost irrelevant. The staff has made a recommendation and they live in these, between these four walls every day. every day, and if this gives them a sense of security and can help save even one life, I think it's worth the risk of teeing off a councilman that walks through the place who forgot to put on his or her mask. So I'm supportive of the recommendation of staff. Let's put that in the form of a motion unless there's further discussion, and we can vote it up or vote it down.
Well, I would like to mention, and I agree, masks do help. There's no question. That's why the flu season has not been as strong as it normally is. Strong may not be the right term, but, that's all I can think of. But vaccines allegedly work as well. So I've been vaccinated for well over a month, as well as many, many other people, but I have to walk into a place like this and wear a mask, and I find, frankly, very uncomfortable, and many other people do as well. And again, it goes back to personal responsibility. Do we believe people can be responsible for themselves or not? That's really the basic question, in my opinion. So, do I need a third microphone?
We're just going to rally in that person.
If I, I don't think Kent's spoken yet, so. Oh, well, thank you. That's, that's good. I, I did have a conversation with the county today, because their, until further notice was interesting to me on that end, and they just stated that, you know, they just chose not to put a date on it, because to Marty's point, they wanted the flexibility of being able to end it earlier, if they needed to end it earlier. And so, you know, that was a conversation. If this would go forward, it would be, that I would say it, it is, you know, something that maybe just at this point comes back monthly, if that's what it needs to do, based on, on what's happening around. But having said that, though, you know, we're here again this month without mandates from any official government entity telling us that it has to happen. And so for that, you know, from, from that point, it's, you know, I struggle to support it, because for the, many of the reasons that were already mentioned, I'm not going to go down, down that path of it. But, but I also look at it and go, you know, we've, we've all received communications from patrons who've asked for the mandate to be removed. I personally have not received, other than the senior staff's, you know, support, I've not received anything from anybody saying, please make sure the libraries keep the masks. So, you know, now we'll probably get that, now that I say it. So look for the emails this week. But at the end of the day, you know, I just think, you know, that personal responsibility is there, and I think that we should, we should not have the mandate in place.
I'm just going to say one thing in response, and, because this, this reminds me of a lot of the smoking ordinance of years ago, when it was a lot of, well, should we ban smoking in a lot of public places?
Right.
And it wasn't because, there was a lot of personal choice arguments made, and ultimately it's because, because it harms others. That's why we, that's part of the reason we're doing it, the main reason we're doing it. I feel like that's why we wear masks, is to not harm others. We talk about personal responsibility, well, there's also community responsibility, and because the whole idea is, even if you're vaccinated, I think, we don't know if it spreads or not, but the idea is that we try to minimize the spread until frankly, as many people as possible are vaccinated, and we'll all be much better off. So that's why I support the mandate. And frankly, it wouldn't matter to me if the county or the city had a mandate or not at this point. And when we say government body, we are a government body, and I think we have that responsibility to decide that matter for this, for this entity.
So what measure do you use, then? Who decides, okay, it's fine?
What's good in the?
Ultimately, I think it's going to come down. I think it comes down to CDC's recommendations, it comes down to.
Well, they bounced all oak, as has Fauci.
I know, but I, I understand there's been changes, but I think the mask, strongly encouraged or mandated, has never really stopped.
But if somebody's going to be protected, come in with a mask. All the staff can wear a mask. We're not saying you can't wear a mask. We're just saying you can't mandate it. So if staff, we're concerned about staff.
But you wearing a mask protects me just as, almost as much as me wearing a mask. You wearing a mask protects me just as much as myself wearing a mask.
No, if you wear a mask, you're theoretically protected.
I, my understanding is, the more people wear a mask, the less the spread's going to be. One person is not, unless I, unless I have an N95, and I don't have an N95, so.
I'd love to see credible data on that.
So are we opposed to, let, I mean, because it's, we're going to be strong with every way we stand, right? I think I'm the only one that's on the fence in the middle here. Are we, would there be any opposition to extending it for another 30 days and then doing a review again?
Be honest, it's almost, I refer that. The July 4th staff recommendation, I would go with that, but I do think we just need to continue. If the numbers start to be better, then I might be more comfortable doing it, yeah.
So you're suggesting extending it to May 30?
To our next board meeting, or 30 days from, because it's the 30th, right? So, yeah, 30 days, we can talk about it at the next board meeting and see where the numbers are.
My question is, what's going to, what's going to be the deciding factor when we go down the road of extending it for another 30 days? Is it going to be 60% of the country? Is it going to be 100% of the staff? Is it going to be the fact that it's not mandated anywhere, except for Menards? What's going to be the, the cutoff? What are you looking for in 30 days?
That's a great, that's a great question, and I can answer it for me, right? I personally look at how the numbers are being impacted, whether they're going up or down, and how many folks are showing on the vaccination scale. That's what I've been looking at, as to determine how involved I want to be in things. I'm here today because, and Paul can vouch for this, because we agreed to come, and when Paul jokingly said he would be late, I said, I sent him a private message, saying, hey, if I got to be there, you better be there.
You don't know if you're not.
You were not late, thank you. So, I mean, I get it, and I know that we have to return back to normal. So I look at what, how does it impact me personally? I look at the number of people that have been vaccinated and the number of, of infections that, whether they're going up or down. First, I used to be freaked out about the deaths, right? The deaths count, but it seems like that's kind of taken a stabilization, right? So the impact or the increase as we go. We just came out of the whole spring break thing, so numbers have been going up, so maybe if we wait a little longer, the spring break impact may go down. And I know you're laughing, but you asked me, and I'm telling you.
I'm, I'm, I'm trying to think about this.
That's, that's what I've been using as my gauge to be involved or not be involved, other than things that I absolutely have to be at.
So you're looking at infection rates, and you are also looking at vaccination rates?
Vaccination rates, yeah. And I'm fully vaccinated. I'm sitting here fully vaccinated, but I still believe in wearing my mask, and I, I still stay at home as much as I can.
I'm not yet, Jim.
And I guess, and I guess, I listen to the argument, and I think that has already been decided by people who are in it. Otherwise, we would have a mandate in place at the state or the county level. And so I look at it going, we're literally right now saying that we know more than the Allen County Board of Health and the Indiana Board of Health. That's what we're saying. So that's the part that I just look at and go, you know, Jim wants some kind of number, which I agree on that sense, but in my mind, I feel like the state and the county have already, they've already set their thresholds, or there would be a mask mandate in place right now. So they've removed it, because we are below those barriers. Now, if the, if the numbers go back up and we go into those barriers and we have to do it, or into those areas, then, then they'll put a mask mandate back in place, and we will happily apply, I mean, from that standpoint. But, you know, as we sit here right now, the people who are in this every day have said, there is not a need for a mask mandate. So if that's the case, then I don't see how we should be more strict.
I think they said it somewhat differently. It's not there isn't a need, but they were strongly encouraged. It didn't say, forget the mask and put them in your drawer. We suggest that you wear them. We're not mandating them en wall. But I think we could discuss this until next month's meeting.
Well, hospitalization rates were one of the issues as well, way back when, when we were told, oh, is it 90 days to flatten the curve or whatever? And I hear the hospital rate, hospitalization rates every day for our local hospitals, and they're just way, way, way down from what they were. So that's another factor. There was a concern that they would be overwhelmed, or by no means overwhelmed at this point. You know, the reality, or the highlight, at a high level, herd immunity, what we're trying to do right now is create herd immunity through vaccinations. We've, we've simply been delaying herd immunity with all the lockdowns and all the masking, and I understand that, but that's, that's the reality. At some point, we got to get herd immunity, and I think we're very close. But again, you know, if the vaccines work, it's just, it's just kind of frustrating to not be able to acknowledge that when you go out in public. Anyway, I agree, probably need a vote.
Okay, so we have a staff recommendation. We had a potential friendly amendment, that is, to extend it a month. How would you like to frame this, so that we could vote and move on?
Well, I'll make the motion, and I think, I, I, I would make the motion that we extend it for one more month.
Second.
And we have a second? Motion to extend it one more month, meaning the end?
Until Friday of, after our next board meeting.
Friday after our next meeting, okay? Is there any discussion on that?
I do have a question in, in this, I hope I'm not opening a can of worms. Lord Jesus, please.
Should we take it out of our advice?
I.
Why don't you whisper it to us?
And if, that's the implementation for our staff. How, will they continue to implement the mask the way that it's currently been doing, or will they just, is there a way to tamper and soften them on that? I know they've been very adamant, as people come through the door, on making sure they have a mask on.
We can have some conversations with staff on how to deliver the message in a friendlier way.
If, if a patron absolutely refuses under the guidance or, that there is no state mandate, then what will we do in that case?
So we have a few options. So a medical exemption is already available and has been for a while. We also have service aspects that don't require coming into the building. We are still offering curbside service at all of our locations.
Would, would a patron be asked to leave if they did not put a mask on?
As we are working now, yes, that is happening, if there's not a medical exemption.
When I was walking in, a little old lady, I think she accidentally walked in here, she's not in here now, but she didn't have a mask on, she got almost to the elevator, the security guard followed her over there, but he was as nice as could be with her, and just, you know, asked her to please, if she had a mask, to put one on, so.
That's good to hear.
Nice example.
That's the one I was.
I saw a video put together by a librarian, and I don't know, it might have come from the Indiana Federation of Libraries, and I, I watched that early on, and a lot of them said, you know, don't get into an argument or anything, but periodically roam your area and keep reminding that individual in a nice way. See, we don't have a mask on. Would you please put your mask, put a mask on? So, you know, there are ways of handling it without being manhandled, or womanhandled, or personhandled, I should say, in this day and age, that, that, that could maybe work too.
That could be some question for us.
If they still desire not to put a mask on, you're eventually going to have to say, please leave the library.
We can also offer them curbside service.
Which is, please leave the library.
Yes.
Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second that we extend this a month, and revisit the issue. No further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by aye.
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 Opposed by nay?
Nay.
Any abstentions? We have one more month, Susan? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any items of new business that should come before this body? How about public comment? Has anyone signed up our new sign-up sheet?
No.
No? Okay. And then, seeing and hearing no other items, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, aye. Opposed, nay. Now stick around, we have an executive session.
Aye.